All right, thank you, welcome everyone. This is the time of the open forum, is there anyone that would like to address the board at this time? Is there anyone that would like to address the board at this time? Hearing none, we'll move on. We need a motion for the approval of today's agenda.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion?
Just a comment, you were emailed a couple of updates to the agenda on the consent portion earlier today, and I just wanted to make sure you had a chance to look at those.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
All in favor, aye? Aye? Anyone opposed? And we do have a quorum, I just want to, case, for those watching on TV that can't see the whole area, so we do have a quorum today. Does anyone know if Dave is coming? I did not receive a message.
I've not heard from him.
Okay. We'll move on. The consent items are listed, and unless there's desire to discuss one individually, we'll have them all move as one. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye? Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Reports, Dr. Funk.
Just, first thing out of the gate, I want to give you an update on what's happened in the legislature. We are in the bigger financial picture in the state. We have probably the largest surplus I've seen since I've been a superintendent, and so it's very disappointing to see that the state, both houses have 1% or a little bit less for an increase to the funding formula for education next year. So I had Lori figure it out late last week, how that would impact Albert Lee. If the legislation passes in its current form, we would have a deficit next year on the development of next year's budget, somewhere in the realm of $350,000. So, clearly, I think throughout the state districts are seeing this, and clearly both houses have the capability to put more money on the formula, and neither of them have done so to this point. I've had conversations, either through email or in person, with Senator Sparks and Representative Bennett, and both of them believe that it'll be between 2% and 3%, but it's not looking real good right now. So, I would encourage board members, I can send you contact information if you'd like to contact individuals. I've emailed the governor myself a couple different times on this issue, and it is, they just aren't listening to education, so that's very concerning. The one good thing coming out of the legislature that I've seen is, the senate has, looks like they're going to approve some sort of version of the alt facilities maintenance that we talked about a few months back, which would allow school boards to levy for more maintenance if it was needed, which currently only 25 school districts in the state have that, so that would provide it statewide. So that's a piece of good news. I didn't put any more initiatives in there, because there are a lot of them that maybe the senate has done, that the house hasn't, or the house has done, and the senate has not. So, it's going to be an interesting next month, as the two houses come together on this issue. And the other thing I have on there, or don't have, is the governor's bill. I think the house has, their bills are on 125 million for education, I think the governor's is over 750 million, but most of his is going to pre-K-12. He wants to encourage universal preschool, which doesn't have much support in either house, and I don't know how much support it has throughout the state. So that's the legislative update. A little bit of good news coming out of Southwest Middle School, they have been picked by the Minnesota Association of Secondary School Principals, they have a magazine, they are going to be running an article on Mr. Kovach's Tiger Plus Intervention Program, and we'll get him and maybe a couple of his staff members here sometime in the next couple of months, to give you kind of an overview of exactly what they're doing. But they're taking advisory time and running interventions for kids a couple of times a week during that time, and it's been very successful. If you are a junior at Albert Lee High School, for the first time, all juniors in the state of Minnesota will be testing, and that will occur on April 28th. And so, that'll be an interesting experience, as we follow the ACT rules for the 200-plus juniors who will be taking the test.
The other students are still in school?
Yep, we're going, we're having school that day. As many who have heard, Ross Williams has been selected to be new elementary principal up in Wayzetta, and so Ross and Mary Williams will be moving to the Twin Cities, and we are looking at the whole teaching and learning department and the approach we're taking, and we've got a number of strong individuals who work as coaches or interventionists within the district, and we are looking at restructuring the department, because K-12, and it's been K-12 since probably Judy's been doing it for years and years, and that is such, with all the different funding and governmental programs and grants, that is just a huge, huge job. So, we're looking at dividing it up into a 612 director and a K-5 coordinator, and this will provide more focus, and we're hopeful we can find some good internal candidates to fill this position, and then restructure further within the department, once we would hire them. If we are able to hire the internal people, we would be able to restructure at a net cost savings to the district. So, I think this would provide us the opportunity to be more focused, and at the same time, more effective and efficient in our operations. Safe, healthy welcoming, the high school under the leadership of Mark Rose Claus and Ted Herman, our school resource officer, have done a great job in preparing our students for prom, and to really demonstrate the dangers of drinking and driving. So, KAL did a very nice piece last week on what occurred at Albert Lee High School during their 15 minutes event, and so Ashley, let's go ahead and show that video to the board to demonstrate what our students went through, and I'm sure Gabe, you probably have some comments on this as well.
Accidents and careless decisions, they shatter the lives of countless people, and it happens somewhere in the United States every 15 minutes. It's entirely preventable. Today, it was part of a lesson that students at Albert Lee High School will never forget. ABC Six News reporter Dan Conrad was there.
Every 15 minutes, we lose someone in the United States in an alcohol-related crash.
May I get your attention please?
It's where we will make an announcement over the intercom that a student has killed in a mock accident.
Bull jumped through, a senior at Albert Lee High School was killed today in an alcohol-related traffic accident.
The Grim Reaper will come to their room, a police officer will read the obituary that the parents written up.
She enjoyed all things that involved Doctor Who, Star Trek, and Charming.
Every 15 minutes, a kid will get taken out of their class.
And then we put some white makeup on them, just to kind of simulate that they've been killed.
A rose will be set on their desk, a black rose.
They go back to class, but they don't talk to anyone, they're just a ghost, basically.
And they can't interact, and that gets a little disturbing for them.
You'd be an irreplaceable hole in our lives.
We've had some of the classmates start crying while we've been taking them out and reading the obituary.
Bo was a 38 student through us, created at Albert Lee High School.
I think this is going to make kids think a ton.
And we waited for the tantrums, the twos or threes, but that never came along either.
It feels like it's real. It isn't someone just citing statistics and standing and giving a lecture.
Best friend, Mary Beth, beloved Lab Oz, who hasn't left her bedroom since the horrible night.
What we want to take away is, the choices that you make in your life will affect you and others.
She's deprived by numerous cousins, good friends, and her beloved German Shepherd, Charlie.
Reality is that someone could die in a drunk-driving accident, or an accident at all, at any time, no one knows.
She's preceded in death by her maternal grandfather.
This is just so worth it, just getting this in the kids' minds, that like this can happen, this does happen.
And tomorrow, students at Albert Lee High School will be having an all-school assembly to talk about today's Grim Reaper exercise. They're also going to hear from somebody you may know, Rita Seehaw, we've done numerous stories on her and what happened. She lost several family members in a drunk-driving-related crash a number of years ago, and she also does a lot of public speaking on forgiveness related to that accident.
So, that concludes my report, any questions?
I had an opportunity that same night, and then a couple days afterwards, to talk with a couple different groups of kids with regards to the whole program for the whole day, and it made a huge impact. You know, it's something that I think, if we could save just one kid from a bad experience, it was definitely worth it, and I think we'll definitely do that, so appreciate the work on it.
Gabe, you have any comments?
I was on the actual committee who did this, we came to Ted Herman, I was originally a student council officer last year when we were named, came to Ted Herman and asked him, and some of us officers decided not to do it, and then from there, we branched out and we asked our friends and peoples who we were responsible for. And this, we've kept, a lot of us kept it a secret for a year. We kept it a secret from our best friends, from our, our parents knew, but even my own siblings didn't know what was going on, why I was doing this. It is a life experience to sit here and hear your friends' names getting called saying they died. My mom even helped with the makeup, and she said it was really hard for her to see these kids and pretending to paint them and pretending they were dead, and she told me that she didn't know if she could live with me being gone, or one of my siblings being gone from this, and it was really hard for her just to imagine. And sitting through the assembly, because I was working the video that she was doing, it was, I was crying, because you could see the pain that she felt, just imagining all her family was gone. With that, is, we did it is because it's around prom, because we know, even seniors, you know, you're going to have friends drinking and driving. We did it to scare them and to show them reality. When I walked out there, right before the crash, before all the students came out, everyone who participated, we all came out, and I saw one of my best friends on the hood pretending to be dead, and I started crying, because, and I realized at that moment, this could actually happen, seeing this. If that, it was an amazing turnout, it was an experience that all of our students will remember throughout their lives, and I'd like to thank all the community members who helped with this, because it couldn't be done without anybody else.
Thank you, very nice, thanks Dr. Funk. Other school board members, Linda, report. Phil?
I've got a couple things. By the way, a couple of those eighth graders, tough kids, tough boys, a day later, they were crying still about this, so it was a huge impact to them. I had an opportunity to go to a Schools for Equity and Education Regional Meeting here just a little bit ago, Dr. Funk pretty much covered the bulk of the meeting in his update. What was interesting is that there was a couple of school districts there that were stating that, as proposed out of the house and the senate side, even with a $2 billion deficit, they were looking at going backwards, you know, with the proposals that were in place. So, very disconcerting, and hoping that things will get changed there. Also had an opportunity to go to Minnesota School Board Insurance Trust Meeting, we spent a significant amount of time discussing whether or not we were going to start offering or endorsing a company for data security insurance. So, something that I know that's being talked about, or cyberdata, I wasn't supposed to call it that, but that was something coming down the pipe, so.
Julie? Dave? I went to an agriculture and education in Minnesota that was hosted at Hormel last week, so got some ideas about where the state is as far as high school education and agriculture, so I'll forward those on Dr. Funk. So, it was very interesting, that was last week. Anything else? All right, we'll move on to item seven, curriculum and instruction. As you all know, during our calendar discussions, we had some questions about the REACH program, and then ACEs as well, so Jill Johnson is here to update us on that, give us some education about that, yeah, come on up Jill. And I'm sorry, who's with you?
Lana.
Oh, Lana, yes, okay, thank you. You have to, if you're sharing the microphone, you just have to make sure you speak into it, okay?
And I'm Lana Howe. And we're here on behalf of the ACEs Committee of Freeborn County, to talk about the ACEs, the Adverse Childhood Experiences Study. And so, the ACEs study was initially done in California from 1995 to 1997, and it was a study of 17,000 adults, ages 19 to 94, and they were well-educated adults, most had attended college, and only 6% had not graduated from high school. It was a representative of white, middle-class adults. And the study was done, the bottom, it was a pyramid of, if you had an adverse childhood experience, the, you were, then you could experience social, emotional, and cognitive impairment, and then you could experience the adoption of health risk behaviors, and disease, and disability, and social problems, and then early death. And so Dr. Falletti wanted to see how we could look at these scientific gaps and fill in this pyramid, so we didn't have these issues due to the ACEs, two of the ACEs, the adverse childhood experiences. And so the categories that were looked at of the ACEs were abuse, psychological, physical, and sexual, household dysfunctions, substance abuse, parental separation and divorce, mental illness, battered mothers, criminal behavior, and emotional neglect. And so the same kind of study was done in Minnesota in 2011, and it was the 18th state to administer a similar survey. And 13,520 Minnesotans were surveyed, and the nine Minnesota ACEs identified were physical abuse, sexual abuse, emotional abuse, mental illness of a household member, problematic drinking or alcoholism, illegal street or prescription drug use, divorce or separation, domestic violence, or incarceration of a household member. And so what was found in Minnesota was that more than half, 55% of Minnesotans reported one or more ACE. And of the Minnesotans that had ACEs, 60% then had two or more ACEs, and 15% of those had five or more ACEs when they took the ACE survey. And so, not only did they have one ACE, they often had two or more ACEs. Go ahead. So then the ACEs influence multiple outcomes in our lives, and so the general health and social functioning, high perceived stress, difficulty in job performance, relationship problems, mental health issues like depression, sleep disturbances, memory disturbances, anxiety, sexual health, like teen pregnancy, fetal death, unintended pregnancies, prevalent diseases like cancer, chronic lung disease, and risk factors for common diseases, like obesity, poor perceived health, illicit drugs. And so this has become a national health issue. ACEs have strong influence on adolescent health, reproductive health, smoking, alcohol abuse, illicit drug abuse, and the increased risk of early death, health disease, chronic lung disease. And so it is a national health issue, it's a state issue, and it's also right here in a citywide issue as well. And one thing that, in working with, in the homes of parents, and in early childhood special education, we've noticed a real rise of mental health concerns in parents, and this year we had to, we needed to write a home visiting policy, because the mental health issues of the parents that we're working with, and the increase of drug issues, and parents in and out of jail, home visitors just not feeling as safe, and we've just, that incline has really increased, especially in the last, you know, I've worked with the district for quite some time, and it's, there's a definite increase. So it's not just a national issue, it's right here as well. So then ACEs in the brain, oh, can you go back to that one? We know through the breakthroughs in neurobiology, that the ACEs disrupt neurodevelopment and have lasting impacts, effects on the brain's structure and function, and biologic pathways that likely explain the strengths, and the findings from the ACEs study. And so on the left there is the typical brain, and on the right is a brain that has had toxic stress, and it's like a brain that has had a stroke, it's just missing some of those connections. Toxic stress strengthens connections in the parts of the brain that are associated with fear, arousal, and emotional regulation, and toxics, everybody needs stress, like, I'm having a little stress today, everybody has to have stress, and stress is good for everyone, but the toxic stress is a continuous stress for more than 20 minutes, that is toxic in people's lives. And toxic stress negatively impacts the parts of the brain that are associated with learning and memory, and continuous activation of stress response system can also produce disruption of the immune and metabolic system, that can result in a lifetime of greater susceptibility of physical illness, as well as mental health problems. And so, on October 23rd, 2014, presenters from Prevent Child Abuse Minnesota came to us and did a presentation in Freeborn County, and the trainers left with us, kind of a challenge, and they said, "Here in the community, you can sit status quo, or you can do something about this and work together to change the generational cycle of ACEs." And so following that, Mary Leggermeister organized the ACEs Committee through the Blue Cross Blue Shield of Minnesota Growing Up Healthy Kids and Communities Grant, under the Freeborn County Services Collaborative. And so we've been working, and some of the partners under that is on the next slide, you can take a look at that. But our committee goals have really been to educate the county about what the ACEs study is, and what it's all about, and we've been doing presentations about the ACEs to the Ministerial Association, Kiwanis, Public Health, Healthy Families, the School District Cabinet, Early Childhood Special Education. We have set up times with the Jail, the Daycare Association, and the Foster Care. And we're, we want to know, how can we make a difference in Freeborn County? And so that brings us here today. A couple of our recommendations that we have for the school district, as part of the ACEs Committee, is to implement a social skills curriculum. K-6 used to utilize the responsive classroom, but with the turnover of staff, it has been very difficult to maintain. It's an expensive program in and of itself, but just the training, and it's just been hard to keep staff trained. Social skills are rarely being taught in the homes anymore, and I know that the school district can't be in charge of everything, but they are crucial skills that need to be, that are able to create a positive classroom environment, so kids are ready to learn. They improve self-concept, self-regulation, executive functioning skills, and increase academic achievement. And the other recommendation that we have is the REACH program. And so what is the REACH program? It is a voluntary, in-school program designed to assist our students who may need support academically, socially, or emotionally. The goal of the REACH program is to help students experience success by learning life skills to overcome barriers and/or challenges present in their lives. The REACH program not only supports these students academically, but helps students build skills necessary to become successful adults after graduation. REACH started in Hutchinson High School by Chad Harlander, who was a mental health worker doing home visits, and then the state would reimburse for mental health to be done in the schools. And it started in an ALC program, to create a safe place for all kids to belong. It's a program that can pay for itself, when you keep kids in school, and they do not drop out, each student then generates the revenue for staying in school, instead of dropping out. The program requires at least two staff to run it, and run it well. The mission is to reach out and serve all students who need support, by helping them attain their place in life through academic and interpersonal success. REACH stands for relationships, education, accountability, character, and hard work. The philosophy of REACH is believing in the ability of every student to overcome achievement and personal obstacles to achieve success, to treat each student with dignity and respect, while being sensitive to individual needs. So it's an elective course, that has about 15, give or take, 15 to 18 students in a section, it's half a credit, provides social, emotional support, and a safe place. So Mondays is generally a weekend check-in, Tuesdays and Thursdays provide academic support, Wednesdays is character and team building, and Fridays, every student has three goals that they work on, a school goal, an individual goal, and a family goal. And so, this is just an example of the total number of students served in Hutchinson. It started out with 87 students, and in 2013 and 14, it's serving 125 students. And in 2013 and 14, 44 of the seniors were set to graduate, and of those seniors, 28 of them reported that they would have dropped out their sophomore year without the support of REACH. So REACH helps students address the real issues within their lives, so they can focus on the academics. And 29 schools across Minnesota have visited and/or implemented REACH within their school districts. And Chad's saying is, "Together we can save lives." And when they look at the program, they say, "Those kids," and who are they, within the REACH program? There's rule breakers, kids with chemical health needs, three-sport athletes, kids from broken homes, kids from broken home, bunched families, sorry, kids with mental health needs, and academic all-stars, and those kids are our kids. And the REACH program was recently featured on the Fox News out of Minneapolis, and so there's a clip here, should be here. Should be here.
I guess there's a commercial first.
That's Mom and Dad, and this is daughter Stephanie. Two years ago, things were quite different.
I failed every class freshman year because I was suffering with depression and social anxiety.
Her GPA, a .9. Her parents at their breaking point.
She was really struggling to fit in, find her place.
They turned to a program at Hutchinson High School where Stephanie attends called REACH. It meets as an elective class during the school day, but it's not a class per se.
There was not a connection being made between what was going on at home and with the schools.
It was started by Chad Harlander, who has a background in children's counseling.
We have young people that are trying to figure out this world right now and it's very busy. It's a lot different than when I was younger, you were younger, and it's tough. And these kids need support.
The REACH program offers help with schoolwork, character building, and family goals, to name a few. For kids like Stephanie and Caitlin, it's like a club or a team.
It's kind of like a home for me. I like to come in here and I feel like I'm myself, you know, I'm myself.
REACH started here at Hutchinson High School, but because of its success, 11 other schools across the state now have this program and many more are asking about it.
Some of our kids are kids that have really decent GPAs but have anxiety issues.
The day we stopped by, there were visitors from Austin and Otter Tail.
I think so many kids just don't feel like they belong. And they need to know that when they come to school, they have a safe place to go.
And they have regular citizens raising money for the program and for scholarships.
This is a very community grassroots sort of thing. They just evolved naturally.
There's outreach type programs that you can buy off the shelf. And this program works, I think, because it is homegrown.
Just ask Stephanie Ramsey, who now has a 3.7 GPA, the highest in the REACH program at Hutchinson High.
I mean, in a way, it kind of, it sounds like it might have saved your life a little bit.
Oh, I'd probably not be in school right now if I hadn't joined it. Because at 16, you can drop out of school. I probably would have.
And the REACH program has a great track record for getting kids graduated. Last year, most of the 44 kids at Hutch who were set to graduate actually did. And more than half of those kids said that they would probably be high school dropouts if they didn't have that REACH program in their lives. So, saying a lot.
Really turned it around, didn't she? And you and I were talking about this too. Chad Greenway, Vikings linebacker, he's a supporter of this program too.
Huge supporter. Says it's just one of the best programs out there. And I asked him for a comment and he sent me, sent me a really long quote today. And among what he said there, "I had been lucky enough to host a REACH football camp for five years with Chad and his dedication to the program is undeniable. The REACH program is something that every Minnesota school should look into getting because the positive outcomes from unfortunate situations is astounding." And that is a tough part, point in your life too. You don't quite yet know how to navigate a lot of personal situations.
You can look at it as a path, some of you are this way and some go this way. So it's great that they can keep them on the straight and narrow.
Yeah.
Well, thank you. And if you have any more information, any questions? There's our numbers to call if you have any, do you have any questions right now?
Any questions, comments?
Are there any school districts around here who are using the REACH program and what are their successes in it? Do you have any statistics for that? I do, actually. Austin High School is, has implemented REACH for the first time this year. The one piece of information that I have from them is that they sent me some things about office referrals. And for the first semester, they had 95 office referrals from the REACH program, the kids that were in the REACH program. And that was an average of about 1.55 from the kids. Those same students had about 3.75 average last year office referrals. So that was about 2.2 less per semester, less a semester per student is what they averaged. Or about 134.2 less office referrals for the semester from those kids. Stewartville Middle School is also utilizing the REACH program. They just gave me some examples. The total of their sixth through eighth graders, 79.6% passed all classes taken. And they just said, we had one student who had 180 tardies last year and he had a total of only five, five tardies the third quarter. So that was just a astounding increase. But those are the two districts I know real close, real close by.
Only because I don't think I caught it. Where are we at with regards to the evaluation of this program?
I'm just bringing information today.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Yep.
One question I did have. So it can be, I know at Hutch, it said they do it at their high school, but it can be adapted or used also at like the middle school age too?
Yep, and they are implementing middle school now as well in Hutchinson. And it started in the ALC and then they branched out to the high school population and now middle school as well.
Okay, thanks.
Other comments or questions? I appreciate you coming. You know, the ACES, I've been interested in the ACES because sometimes, you know, we wonder why a student can't learn calculus and that student, you know, school might be an escape for that student, let alone trying to learn something. So I think it's always good to keep bringing that up. There's a lot of other issues that come to school with the child and we need to try to work through those. So I appreciate all that you do.
And I know, I'm just going to mention this because we're here. We are trying to get the ACES as much as we can into the schools as well, the, the knowledge about the ACES into the school as well.
Okay, thanks. Other questions or comments? All right, thank you very much. Nicely done. All right, effective and efficient operations. These, these first April meetings are, second April meeting are always difficult because we, we unfortunately have the task of two resolutions which have to do with discontinuing and reducing programs and staff, almost always related to budgeting items and the mismatch of timing of the state budget with our own budgeting process. And so that's what we're going to be doing tonight. Those resolutions will need to be read, usually, although we're going to post them up on the screen and so not read them, but we will need to do a roll call vote for them. So 8.1, resolution discontinuing and reducing educational programs and positions. Jim Querim, Jim?
I think you covered exactly what this is. Couple of things that I would say before we get to the resolution. You know, one of the unfortunate things is that cuts come to the board, but changes or additions to programs or FTEs do not. So, you know, this looks extensive. At the same time, for instance, at the high school, several departments would add some FTE, portions of FTEs. So that's one thing. The other thing that I would mention is as we look at both of these resolutions, one of the practices that we've always used for probationary staff is if a portion of their FTE is reduced, then we non-renew them. And, you know, whatever is there, they would be able to apply for again, just for consistency's sake. So the first one is resolution discontinuing and reducing programs. So we start with that one first. Names are not attached with this. This is programming. As you said, Dr. Shody, most of this has to do with programs that we don't know the funding for and therefore conservatively, we look at reducing those programs until we know what that funding is.
Just a couple of comments on this. You know, you see 1.25 elementary, a lot of that is, we did a good projection at incoming kindergarten, we don't know where that's at yet, so that's why that's on there. You're aware that the board is, or the district is moving towards adding French at the high school. I believe there are 150-plus kids signed up for French. So of course, there are not going to be as many in Spanish. So that's why that is, that is being impacted. And again, as Jim said, some of the areas in the high school, slight reduction in some electives and you'll see some increases, well, you won't see it in this resolution, but there's some increases elsewhere. And then the bulk of them, eight FTEs are related to those state grants that we don't know where the state's at. We'll find out about the AdSIS grant in June, whether or not that's been renewed. And the compensatory pilot grant, we'll find out in May if the legislature refunds that. So again, we're being prudent by making these cuts on the forefront and hopefully we'll be able to hire some of these, these people back over the next few months.
So I need a motion to approve that resolution. Julie, so moved. Bill, second. Now, any other discussion? Okay, I'll do a roll call vote. Linda Laurie?
Aye.
Bill Leland?
Aye.
Julie Johnson?
Aye.
Dave Clatt?
Aye.
Mark Shody, aye. Motion carries five to zero. All right, 8.2, resolution relating to the termination and non-renewal of the teaching contract of probationary teachers. Jim?
So the second resolution related to cuts somewhat, it would be this one where names are actually attached. I would make the caveat here that not all these names are necessarily attached to the budget, to the program cuts in the first one. Some of these have to do with individuals who may have been on a waiver. Well, we need to non-renew them and we can reapply for a waiver July 1st after we open the position to see if a licensed person is there. So there's various reasons here. These are all probationary staff as well, so.
So I need a motion to approve that resolution.
So moved.
Bill's the first. Linda, second. Any other discussion? Okay, also a roll call. Linda Laurie? Bill Leland?
Aye.
Julie Johnson?
Aye.
Dave Clatt?
Aye.
Mark Shody, aye. Motion carries five to zero. Thanks, Jim.
Did we miss an item? 7.2?
We missed an item. We'll come back to it. Thank you very much. 8.3, approval of student staff schedule for June 5th. Dr. Funk?
Well, we've made it into mid-April and we haven't had a snow day yet this year. So it's not going to, I think we had one in May probably last year. So anyhow, June 5th, typically for high school graduation, the high school staff shows up at the graduation. And typically, they're in a finals week and a lot, maybe not necessarily a lot of finals are given that day historically. Well, we're doing things a little differently now when, where most of the kids are taking finals. So at a minimum, we would like to see June 5th changed to a half-day throughout the district. So high school staff has some time and then they can come back for the graduation that evening and participate in that. So have some time to, to clean up and then, and then come back for the graduation that evening. So it would be a change to the calendar, something I know you want to talk about. So, so we're looking for approval on changing the schedule on June 5th to a half-day.
So we'll do a motion. Thank you. Second?
Second.
Second to Julie. Any discussion, comments? All in favor, aye? Aye? Anyone opposed? All right, motion passes. Thank you. All right, I'm sorry, I skipped over inadvertently 7.2, school board scholarship. As you know, the school board has historically awarded scholarships to two seniors. Is that correct? And the amount of $500 each. And we just had to request to have a discussion about that practice, about how it's funded, about moving it forward, that type of thing. So that's what we're going to do. And I know, Bill, you had some, you wanted to talk about it, so I thought maybe I'd ask you to start off.
No, a couple of things. Number one, with Mr. Clatt being new, I just want to make sure that he was aware that we had this in place. And, you know, traditionally, many, many years ago, it was started to make sure that there was kids that were being missed that were very worthy of scholarships. And so to make sure that we could at least catch two of them, the school board at that time adopted this scholarship. Now, we've changed it a little bit and asked for an essay. And I can't remember exactly what that essay was, but I wanted to make sure that we had a discussion on that as well tonight, just to make sure that we're all on the same page with regards to how we go forward with the scholarship.
And does anyone remember, I mean, the criteria for the scholarship now?
Ashley actually has the scholarship, scholarships themselves or the, the applications.
Is yours in there, Linda, or?
I think if I'm remembering right, they fill out the general form, but the essay has to reflect an obstacle they have gone through in, to, I don't want to say make them worthy of the scholarship, but that an obstacle they faced and overcome. If I recall, I think that's a piece of the essay.
Yes, that's correct. So please share in one paragraph, an obstacle you had to overcome. And I remember we talked about that three years ago, maybe?
Actually, I worked, I think it was last year or the year before with Kim Danner to actually change it, to make sure that that portion of it was actually in there because we didn't have that in there before. So I think last year was the first year we had the essay.
Okay.
And then we have, it's usually one male, one female recipient. And also, I think we started talking about it, the money for this scholarship is actually donated by the school board members. So we, we are the ones who actually fund this, these two scholarships. And again, we try and catch someone, like Bill was saying, who, you know, probably wouldn't get a scholarship. So it's kind of, we, we hope to get someone who isn't getting another scholarship. So that's part of the coordinator at the high school to help us with that too, so.
Okay. And the, these are the actual applicants. Has, has there been a selection?
Nope. Those just got sent over. I just had them sent over because I was the contact person last year. And so I had her send them over here because I knew it was going to be on there. So we need to decide how we're going to pick them or choose them or whatever, so. Usually what they would do is they would kind of whittle it down to a couple candidates and then send the information over to us.
They being?
The committee at the high school.
High school, okay.
But now we have all the, we have all of it there.
Got the whole packet?
Yep, that's the packet.
So I guess, and then another thing I think I know is the balance in that fund is, it's in, and so we've funded more than we've given out and should we, do we, do we need a balance? Should we disperse that? Should we add another scholarship for a couple of years? Mike, do you have any thoughts on that?
Yeah, it's, it's like 3,000 something, I think. It's up to you guys how you want to do it. It's, I mean, again, I'll go back to what I tell parent organizations, you know, I had, one of the parent organizations in the district this year wanted to put their PTO fundraising money into CDs because they have so much of it. And I said, time out here, you know? I think the purpose of the, raising the money is to support the programming for the kids. So again, if the purpose of the scholarships is to provide them, I mean, okay, 3,000 is, you know, I guess it's your call, but I mean, there's no, there's not necessarily a reason to have a, a reserve within the, the scholarship fund.
And I'm, I think the reserve is there because some members, and I know and I know, Bill, you're currently, I think you donate your entire board pay to that fund. Is that correct?
When I was the board member initially, I was not able to contribute due to some financial situations, and other board members picked up for me. So this is my way of paying back and going forward with that. But, you know, I wouldn't have any problems whittling it down a little bit, but I would like to see some sort of reserve in there in case a board member is not able to contribute so we're able to get the 500 out to each kid.
Okay.
The other thing I would like to remind you is, you know, the board compensation policy, too. I mean, or whatever you're compensating yourselves. I mean, that's, you know, you're, you're...$1,200 a year is what you're getting as board members. And you're donating, you know, what, $1,000 or collectively, you know? So I think if that compensation goes up, I would be more likely to say, "Yeah, you can spend it down a little bit, too."
Okay, other comments or? So I guess question one, do we want to continue with a board scholarship? So everybody, okay, so that's yes. And then do we want to continue the current practice of what sounds like a committee at the high school will forward us a few names to review or forward us the finalists?
Again, I would like clarity on, unless it's on the, is it on the form? It might be, on what we are looking for, for criteria for the scholarship recipients. Because the more clarity we have on that, the easier it is for the committee to decide. Because I think I've heard criticism in years past where, okay, the intent of the board scholarship was to give it to somebody who wasn't getting another scholarship. And suddenly, you know, individuals have gotten it, and they've had three or four other scholarships. So if we have clear criteria, we're in good shape.
I don't see criteria attached to the application. I do see the paragraph for the obstacle and then just more demographics. I don't know if the student gets some kind of cover lever on top of that that explains it in a different way. I don't know. Yeah, that'd be great.
But again, I think, are you looking for criteria? Because they're going to be probably evaluating these fairly quickly.
I remember from our discussions, we were looking for students that had overcome something substantial. And it wasn't just financial, it could be any other thing. And that to try to, to try to give it to a student that otherwise wasn't going to receive a scholarship. And I don't, so I don't know in the packet who that applies to, but that's what I'd leave to the staff to do that.
I can get it to Kate at the high school and say, "Here's kind of what you're looking for from recipients." And then they can take that into account while the committee is reviewing the scholarships.
And then I guess the other question I have is, do we want to do four $500 ones this year since we have a reserve and spend $1,000 of the reserve this year? Okay. All right, that's good. Other?
One question I have. So are we then going to get from the committee a few names and we're selecting then the final four? Or I'm unclear about that.
I would say if we give them the criteria you're looking for, then they pick the four and just present them. That way, you guys don't have to have a meeting on it.
And so then this year for funding, should we just have the people over here fund the remaining ones? I'm kidding. Do we need funding this year? Should we?
I think what we should do is just revisit this next, you know, probably in the fall.
Fall, okay, and see where the balance is and see where we are. Okay, does that sound good to everybody? Okay. All right, unless I missed anything else, any other business? If not, then we're adjourned. Thanks.